So we're going to begin with COVID briefing. Dr. Esq. I'm going to turn it over to you. Today's briefing will be both the general briefing. We'll have the opportunity to ask questions about that, but in that briefing, there's going to be special attention paid, I think, to the nursing home that were issue. That sort of kitchen asked for, and we're going to be incorporating that into this presentation. All right, Dr. Esq. Or Director Hayden, whichever one of you wants to lead us off. Or manager, did you want to say something before we begin? You're muted.
It is a full day, Mayor and Council, and so we'll get right started, but we'll have Director Hayden lead off. Then we'll pass it to Dr. Esq. We'll ask questions to Dr. Esq. So then he can lead to go to Commissioner's Court before we get into the UT presentation on nursing homes. But Director Hayden, why don't you kick us off?
Good morning, Stephanie Hayden, Director of Austin Public Health. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. Staff continue to contact trace in target populations. We are reviewing and existing our testing and contact tracing services. We are continuing to prioritize Spanish translation and ensure that we are providing services that are bilingual as well. We have with our testing locations, we currently have Dove Springs, Innes, Walnut Creek communities. And this Saturday, we will begin testing on Saturday. So we will be testing four days a week as well as the Louisville location, which is also a Monday through Saturday site. These are walk-up sites. We continue to have our testing availability individuals go online and schedule a test. If they are unable to do that, our nurse line is available to assist them to register and schedule an appointment. We are looking at a few more testing sites in the 78741 and the 78745 and 48 to establish testing in those communities. We are committed to having a testing strategy that is flexible and rapidly respond to changes in the community. We currently have two vendors that are assisting us with testing, and we are in the process of working with a couple of more vendors. Ultimately, we want to ensure that the services that we are providing are culturally appropriate and we are able to provide targeted population services. With our nursing home and long-term care facilities, our nursing, our incident command staff continue to meet weekly with our long-term care staff from nursing homes and assisted living. And per our testing plan, we continue to provide that support to them. As far as a year-to-date number, we have coordinated 7,000 COVID tests in facility settings. After the initial 32 nursing homes in Travis County, we have processed an additional 29 long-term care facility test requests. And so as we continue to work in that space off of clusters and our testing plan, we will continue to work through the long-term care facilities. In addition to that, we are also assisting other facilities that may have testing needs as well. We've determined that there are some social service agencies that require this test, and so we are using one of our vendors to do that. Our strike teams have the primary function of stabilizing staff at these impacted facilities. And so the provision of the strike team assures the facilities have a staff to provide resident care, but it also provides additional staffing for the team for people when they have COVID-positive individuals. And then we've also been able to model appropriate PPE use. So we've been able to provide some training to ensure that appropriate use of PPE and make sure that our teams are focused on process improvement and patient care to address the outbreak. Year-to-date, our strike teams have been deployed to 19 facilities. This is 13 additional strike teams since we responded in May. So a total of 134 agency staff have received strike team training, and 167 agency staff have received an N95 fit testing. As far as the need for the strike teams, we are continuing to work with the agencies just to determine their need. We are continuing to address this challenge by adding staffing through a contract. With our PPE, our long-term facilities were offered a one-time, what we're calling a PPE pushback to all of the facilities. Thirty-five assisted living and 32 nursing homes have assisted this PPE as of today. With training, we continue to provide training to our long-term care staff. And so 299 long-term care facility staff have been trained on various topics, including N95 fit test, infection control, onsite PPE, and hand hygiene checkoff. So this is just some of the things that our team have been doing. As I shared in a memo last week, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services will devote $5 million to the Provider Relief Fund, which is really good news to our long-term care facilities to build out the nursing homes and enhance nursing home support. And so the funding can be used for hiring additional staff, implementing infection control, and mentorship programs. As a part of that, 15,000 testing devices will be sent over the next few months, and 600 were shipped out last week. According to the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, to receive a point-of-care testing site, you must be considered a hotspot. And in Texas, Bear, Dallas, Harris, Hildigo, and Travis are considered to be hotspots. In order to receive a point-of-care testing device, a facility must meet the criteria and must have the Clinical Laboratory Improvement Amendment certified of a waiver to receive a testing device. With our homeless, all four of our pro lodges are full, that's 300 guests. Seventeen people, we're really excited about this, 17 people have exited to permanent housing. And we are going to activate our protective lodge as the ongoing emergency response and infection strategy. With our partnership, we have tested, over 650 tests have been administered and focused opportunities for multiple shelters and encampment areas across the city. Downtown Austin Community Court, Front Steps Salvation Army, and Communities for Recovery Integral Care are continuing to provide that focus case management and supportive services. With our childcare facility as well as our school-aged children, we have established an incident command structure. That incident command structure will work with all childcare facilities, with our task force, as well as school districts, to assist them with reopening plans. So more of that will be coming. The last thing I did want to share is we have continued to work on the survey results. As we reviewed the results that came into the department, 29 of those 53 strategies have been implemented. Our team is working with our outreach folks so we can establish and work together a little closely on the 24 that need to be implemented. So at this time, we want to really spend some time to meet with the community in those strike teams to address how can we do more targeted work in the populations that have disparities. That includes my report, and I am going to shift over to Dr. Esq. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask our AV folks to pull up my slides if you don't mind. Thank you. Excellent. Next slide, please. So Mayor and Council, as you can see, we've had a substantial decrease in our number of new confirmed cases over the past 12 days. Right now, our seven-day moving average for new cases is 275. And just a few weeks ago, at the beginning of July, you know, we were closer to 550 to 600. So definite improvements. We saw a report yesterday that Travis County has the 15th highest number of active cases in counties across Texas, and we're proud of the progress that we've made. And I think this is a result of a community that has been engaged together to really get a lid back on this. We've got more work to do, but we're certainly headed in the right direction. Next slide, please. Now, this is a graph of our doubling time with the yellow representing the seven-day moving average of our doubling time. You can see back on June the 7th, we were at 40, a little over 40 days. At the beginning of this month, we hit our lowest doubling time, which was around 7, or correction, which was around 12 days. Now, I'm proud to say that we are over 60 days now with a seven-day moving average of 65 days at this stage. So this is the best position we've been in in terms of the doubling time. Again, this is also a function of the number of cases that we have. The more cases we have, the more difficult it is to double it. But it's also reflective of the fact that we have fewer cases being reported each day, and we certainly hope that trend continues. Next slide, please. This slide is showing you our key indicator of new admissions. Again, the yellow is showing the seven-day moving average of those new admissions. So again, we've had 12 days of decreasing numbers on the moving average, which is currently at 47. And this is now full 21 days from the peak of that moving average. So again, this certainly does appear to be a downward trend. Again, this did not occur by magic. It occurred because we had a community committed to decreasing the spread of disease. If we remove that commitment, the disease will return again. And this is why it's more important than ever to stay the course and for us to continue those protective efforts, not only to decrease the admissions and the burden on the hospitals, but so that we can be in a better position to reopen our schools and get kids back in the classroom. Next slide, please. Now, this graph is showing us three things. The blue, again, is showing us the total hospitalized individuals. The orange is showing the ICU admissions, and the gray is showing those individuals on a ventilator. The hospitalizations has had a seven-day decrease in that moving average, which is currently at 424. You can see a more gentle downward trend in the ICU and ventilated patients, although we'd still call it a plateau at this stage. Again, it's not increasing, and that's something to be grateful for. But on a slide that I'll show you here shortly, it'll explain a little bit why that number is likely to stay plateaued for at least a little while longer. Next slide, please. This is an update on our graph related to race and ethnicity among our hospitalized individuals. The right side is showing you the last week admissions and the race and ethnicity breakdown. That's showing that our Hispanic population is representing 51.1% of the admissions last week. Again, a downward trend from the previous weeks, but still overrepresented of the Hispanic population in our community. Our white, non-Hispanic in blue is at 31%, so relatively plateaued from last week. And our African-American in gray percentage is 11%, which continues to increase. Again, also overrepresenting our African-American community in terms of hospitalizations. Next slide, please. This graph is showing you the breakdown of hospitalizations by age group. You can see that on the right side of the screen is the results from the last week. And you see a cluster of lines representing the 50-plus age groups. About 50% of the hospitalizations last week were in individuals who are 60 years or older. About a third of them are 70 years or older. And again, this tells us that the likelihood that the ventilator numbers and ICU numbers are going to continue to plateau. And also is a bit ominous in terms of our predictions regarding deaths. We know that particularly over the age of 60, the risk of death is substantially higher. So I think this tells us, and the past several weeks has told us, that we can expect that our death numbers are going to increase as these individuals have increased their representation amongst hospitalized individuals. Next slide, please. This slide gives you a aggregation of data from a number of different testing entities around Travis County. So this includes Austin Public Health, Community Care, Austin Regional Clinic, Ascension Seaton, St. David's, and others. And this shows us trends over, well, since the beginning of June. And you have to remember that the right side, the last column of July 19th to the 25th, still has some results which have not been received yet. So that's not going to be a complete picture yet. And in terms of the number of cases that, or number of tests that were performed, as well as the percent positive. But you can see that we have had a three weeks, or particularly the past two weeks, where we've had substantial decreases in the rate of positivity. We are also noticing that we have a decrease in the number of individuals who are requesting testing through our drive-through site. Again, we want to encourage folks, if they have symptoms or they have an exposure, to go online to the austin texas.gov/covid19 website and do a self-assessment to see if they need to be tested. We are testing individuals who have risk factors, who have exposures, and who may not be symptomatic at this stage. And so it's important for folks to go and sign up for testing to see if it triggers a request for a test. Next slide, please. You can go to the next slide, please. Sorry, that's just a redundant slide. This is, this graph is showing us the percent of positive cases by age group. Again, last week, this is the data from 721 to 727. You can see that the 20 to 29 age group is more than 20% of the cases, so the highest number of cases. You know, followed closely by 30 to 39 and 40 to 49. So there still is quite a bit of spread amongst the individuals who are testing positive in terms of their age group. We are trying to get some additional information on this data to determine percent positive by age group. Looking at some other data sets, those data sets are suggesting that the 10 to 19 age group have the highest rate of positivity over the past two weeks. You know, the fact that they are being tested less is why they represent a smaller number of the percent positive cases. But we are seeing disease spread amongst that group. And we want to be able to provide additional information for you, particularly as we consider the schedule for school reopenings. Next slide, please. This chart is an update on our nursing home and long-term care facility outbreaks. So a total of 113 new cases in the past seven days. This is a decrease from the previous two weeks, but we clearly have more work to do in terms of nursing home outbreaks. You can see that this information is still coded and is not listing the facility name. This is a result of a legal opinion by the city attorney's office that the recent AG ruling, which applied to HHSC, does not apply to the city. So we'll continue utilizing this format of sharing information until we get a different ruling. Next slide, please. And finally, I want to touch a little bit upon where we are with the school's discussion. We are working with our school districts, as Director Hayden said. We have a team working on guidelines. One of those guidelines is going to be centered around our staging. And, you know, I think we're likely to advocate for a phased reopening of schools based upon the level of risk that we're in. You know, we face a lot of questions about, you know, when's the right time? How many students do we let in? What about extracurricular activities? And those are items that we're working on. I will say that our party has to be safety. It has to be maintaining public health. We've seen over and over again that when we rush to open things, if we don't have the appropriate protections in place, it leads to cases surging and shutting those things down again. And we do not want to be in that situation in terms of schools. It is important for us to try to get kids back in the classroom, but we also must consider the continuity of education for these students. And we do not want to be in a situation where schools are open and closed and open and closed. Because that may be worse than just waiting, progressively opening schools with a relatively few number of students, allow the schools to work out the processes, allow us to be in a better place in terms of the stage of risk in the community, and then progressively allowing more students into the classroom. Again, we are working on these guidelines. We're working on algorithms to allow schools to have some uniformity and how they respond to various events such as a new case or a cluster. And we're also working on some requirements for school reopening. So these are things that we hope to have drafted this week, that we will engage our superintendents and other stakeholders on so that we can have a relatively uniform approach to school reopening. I also want to mention that I do have concern about the differences in application of public health principles between public schools and private religious schools. You know, I understand that the Attorney General of the state of Texas has stated that this is a First Amendment issue, and I don't personally believe that's correct. A public health issue is a public health issue. And when we have a uniform concern and a uniformly applied standard for public and religious schools, it's fair and it makes sense. Our teachers at private schools are in the same circumstances as teachers in public schools. And I think we have to continue to work together as a community to address all of these various settings to ensure that the protections are in place uniformly for our educators and for our school staff. And with that, Mayor, I will turn it back over to you for questions. Mayor, you're muted.
Can we return the screen to the participant page? Councilmember Poole.
Thanks, Mayor, and good morning, everybody. Dr. Esq., I had a question for you, and then I guess, I don't know if it's a question for you or for legal. So on the positivity chart that showed hospitalizations, it looked like we had about 8,000 tests administered last week. So can I just fairly estimate that we are testing 1,000 per day?
So councilmember, that's the total testing from the entities that are contributing results to us. And those are the ones that we have results for. So there may be additional ones from last week that we're still pending results. That's just what we have back so far.
But just looking at that chart, knowing that it is all the reports that have come in in a certain timeframe, can we just do a simple division and say generally we have about 6,000 per day being tested?
Yes, but again, this is only about eight different contributors. There are many more doing testing, including urgent care centers and freestanding emergency rooms and clinics. So this is a snapshot, but...
A limited universe. Do you know what the larger universe is that is not being captured in these numbers there?
I do not.
Okay. And then the second question I had is relating to the AG ruling and the publication of the names of the different nursing homes. We talked about being able to list them. We went to the coding protocol in order to preserve some anonymity, although that is not in my mind, the same thing as holding private particular patients particulars. So why does the Attorney General's ruling not apply to the City of Austin? If that information is now public and in the newspaper of record here in Austin, why wouldn't we also add that to our charts for transparency and accountability?
So councilmember, this is, we got a ruling from the Attorney General telling us that we had to keep the information confidential. We already have a ruling, so that's what we're abiding by.
Can we go back, please, to the Attorney General and try to align the more recent ruling with the previous ruling so that there are no gaps? It seems odd, and people were questioning why the City of Austin doesn't have the same information that is publicly available on the newsstands.
We can look at it again, but...
What I'm asking is, will legal please connect with the Attorney General's office and review the disparate rulings so that we can get some congruity? Clarity, we are seeking clarity as we often do when we get rulings, judicial type rulings. Can we do that?
Be happy to connect with them.
That'd be great, thanks. I think that information does need to be recorded in our file to be fully trusted. Thanks.
Councilor Kitchen.
I just want to say I agree with Councilmember Poole. Actually, at some point, I know our schedules are packed right now, but at some time, at some point, I'd like to have another legal conversation about our discretion. I think it makes no sense to have the names available publicly, and then we're not releasing them. I mean, some of it is a disconnect. So as a result, we get a disconnect on what's actually happening with regard to these facilities. So I can talk with you offline, City Attorney and others, to see. Again, I know that our schedules are packed, but I would like to have further conversation about our discretion as a city to make data available. I think it's really important for families.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. This question might be for Dr. Esq. Here is a chart that used a couple times that talks about race and ethnicity. And the very first day or two, there's this jump from 50 to zero into lines. Can you tell me if that is an anomaly? Or is there a change in the way the data was collected very early on? Or what might be causing those numbers to jump in that way?
Councilmember, it's because we had very few cases. So there was lots of variation in the beginning because we had a handful of individuals hospitalized back then.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
You bet.
Colleagues, any other questions? Yes, Portova.
Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on a conversation we had, I think, at our last COVID briefing. We had talked about the situation with the schools and the question... and the questions that parents were facing as they made that decision of where their students should go to school, where their scholars should go to school, to the great phrase of Councilmember Harper-Madison's. And I just wanted to follow up and say that we did explore the idea of having a joint subcommittee conversation around that or having a different community meeting. And because the situation was changing so quickly and indeed, you know, that week, AISD and other school districts announced that they would not be going back to school in person until September. We have not, we are not moving forward with that plan and of having a subcommittee convene that conversation at this time because they're just are still changing situations every day with regard to schools. I think you and I, just to remind folks, Mayor, you and I had talked in the meeting about convening such a conversation. I just wanted to follow up with my colleagues and let them know that at this point, we're kind of watching, watching the situation. Dr. Esq., I know that you're, as you said, in close communication. And so if there is an interest and you think there would be a facility to having that broader conversation since we're down the road, that would be good. Of course, AISD is also spinning in those conversations with their students.
Thank you. Councilmember Chris Mar.
Thanks for the presentation. And of course, we want to keep urging people to do what they're doing. But even with that, there are, of course, people who are still getting very seriously sick and dying. How are we dealing on getting information to us about, broken down about what targeted strategies we should be pushing further to reduce spread, especially based on economics? I know we've had conversations here about, do we know how many people are denied unemployment insurance? And that's why they're going to work in cases they're spreading at work versus people who aren't given sick time? And that's where we see spread versus people getting sick because of a gathering or because they didn't know they had it and weren't tested? Or we, because each of those things merits a different strategy. And I know we're working on each of them, but I still am not clear about how much we're seeing each of those common drivers of cases being, you know, getting people into the hospital.
Councilmember, I'll start and then I'll have Director Hayden respond as well. You know, there continue to be barriers in terms of people getting tested and people isolating. Some of those are economic. We're still hearing that folks are going to work despite the fact that they've been, you know, identified as a case. And there's concern that people will lose their job or certainly lose the ability to support their families. Having said that, you know, I think we have growing evidence across the country that that disease spread is more likely to happen in gatherings, in family gatherings, gatherings for parties, for birthdays, for funerals, because of the duration and the nature of those interactions. So, you know, I think it's important for us, while we focus on the importance of getting folks to have the support they need to stay home when they're sick, we also need to focus on reminding the community that they're not safe around family and friends. In fact, they probably have increased danger of transmission in those personal settings, those face-to-face settings than they do in a workplace or, you know, going to a restaurant or a business. And I'll pass it over to Director Hayden, who may be able to comment further on some of the other elements of your...
And right before Director Hayden does, that is also anecdotally what I have seen and heard. The mayor and I, together with a group of about 20 Spanish speakers, primarily from my district the other day, just a group of constituents. And it was heartbreaking but, and real that of that group of 20 people, a decent handful had had COVID-19, several had been hospitalized, and every single person knew people with COVID-19. People knew folks that had died. And the stories were varied, from people being forced to go to work, having no other option than to work, not getting tested or not knowing or getting it at a gathering. We know that all of these are serious. I think my question is more to, are we getting information about how much of each of those kinds of spread we're seeing in the community? Because of course, we have to work on all of them, but it's hard to know which ones are impacting us the most right now. When you go to a meeting and hear that all of these things are happening, I don't know if it's each thing is happening equally or if there's more of one that's an issue than the other.
You know, according to my conversations with our epidemiologists, you know, they feel that it is more of the personal gathering. I think that, you know, even when you don't live with another person that's your family, I mean, it's your family. So even though you may not be going out in public, in public spaces, the gatherings are continuing. And so it is, it is still a significant amount of that that is occurring, you know, in our community. And that is why we have always emphasized the importance of, you know, just trying to find other traditions. And it's really hard to have people to do that if, you know, if a grandparent is, you know, turning 90 or 100. I mean, everybody wants to come and be in that space. And so, you know, we continue to emphasize that. We have received information as well that, you know, our staff have really emphasized to folks that we're talking to, reminding them, you know, it's not a good idea, you know, to stay home. And, you know, some folks are doing that. I mean, it is reflective in the numbers, but we know that there is going to be more targeted work that we're going to need to do. And so in those strike team conversations that, you know, we will be having, we need to get more ideas from our partners of what strategies that we, additional strategies we can take.
Thank you. It's very useful. Dr. Hayden, can you close the loop on that memo? There was a plan that your office put out, which I appreciated. You took it to the community. There was input that came from the community. Just to close the loop on that by identifying what, well, finish it with whatever input that you've gotten, but then to identify for the community what they could expect to see happening. What is the priority of the things that are in there? And when they're going to be done and who's going to do them? And in that regard, if events are now overtaking those kinds of things and it's more the family kind of stuff that there may not have been... I mean, if you could close the loop on that memo so that people could see what the priorities are, what the time framing is on, what they could expect to happen from that, I would appreciate that. And then the other question that Councilmember Kassar asked, which I get asked a lot, relates to kind of the contact tracing in the city. We had a chart that showed where the contact tracing was showing the greatest incidence of stuff. If we could renew the reporting of that chart, I think that would be helpful for the community to see what, where we're seeing things. And colleagues, as we take a look at where we are on the longer arc, as we bring the numbers down and the infectivity goes down, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden, I've asked them to take a look at what the contact tracing is in a world where the numbers come back down and to take a look at what would happen if we were to quadruple the number of contact tracing that we do relative to what the national standard is, to actually have something that more closely approximates what's happening in other countries? What would that take? What would that look like? What would that cost? And what would the benefits, if any, doing that in our community? So, Dr. Hayden, thank you. Councilmember Alter.
Good morning and thank you for this information. I was wondering if, I'm not sure if this will be Dr. Esq. or Dr. Hayden, if you could speak to any more information we have about potential spread in childcare centers or if we're not experiencing that here in Austin? If you can comment on what we are experiencing.
Currently, one of the reasons why we added what we're calling an incident command structure was we were starting to see an increase in childcare facilities. Initially, we established a childcare task force. And so because of the increase in the number of facilities, because more people are going to work, they're taking their, you know, their children into facilities. And so the goal of this group will be is they will have, be set up just like the nursing home task force. And they will be able to, you know, provide more technical assistance in, you know, if there is a need to show them how to use PPE, how to clean the childcare facilities, but be able to provide that weekly, you know, daily kind of intervention. There'd be a mailbox set up. We've identified epidemiology staff that are going to be assigned to that area. And we're doing this just so, because we did see that increase and we want to get ahead of the curve and be able to provide the additional assistance at these facilities as we see clusters at each site.
Thank you. And then I wanted to just add on to the conversation that Councilmember Tovo raised before about the joint meeting. I believe that Dr. Esq. and some other staff spoke with a bunch of school board members recently. And I know that was very much appreciated to have that opportunity for them to interact directly with Dr. Esq. And I know I'm in touch regularly with trustees. And, you know, there's a lot of, lot of conversations, a lot of complicated decisions going on. But just want to, you know, continue to reinforce our need to be available and supporting our school leadership as they make these fairly difficult decisions about opening and support them in any ways that we can.
Okay, anything else for, Dr. Councilmember Turiya?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Dr. Esq. Have you noticed if there's ever a cluster of infections in a daycare center? Are you allowed to report that and where the location is at?
Councilmember, I don't know the answer to that. You know, I think generally we approach it in a, to nursing homes where the childcare center is responsible for notifying family and staff if there's a case there to ensure that those individuals who may be exposed are notified. I don't know that we've looked at the issue of public disclosure of that yet or not.
Dr. Esq., I don't think that we have. I'm happy to take a look at that. I think a difference might be with a nursing home, people are living there. So that is the real issue that has been a concern. But happy to take a look at that, Councilmember Turiya and Dr. Esq., and get back to you.
Yeah, because I would really like to know, you know, if there's, are infections going on at these daycare centers? Because we're getting pretty close to opening up our schools even at a very, hopefully, in a way that's through the scientific way. But I'm really concerned because if transmission is being passed around in daycare centers, then it would be also passed around, I would assume, in our kindergarten and elementary schools also.
Yeah, Councilmember, let me just say that yes, there is activity in childcare centers across the state of Texas. Yes, there will be efficient in schools across the state of Texas. You know, we've, we've got to be very careful again when we reopen schools. And, you know, we don't have finalized guidance yet, but it's likely that the first step of, you know, reopening schools will probably be capped at around 25% of students in person. Because we're sure that those children who really must be in person have the opportunity to be in person. Those are, you know, our special needs students. Those are individuals, students who may not have access to digital services at home or a support structure at home to support education. It's, you know, those K through five students that I've mentioned before. And we've got to make sure that we have the processes working with a small percentage of students. Make sure that we work out the details of the spacing and the masking and the social distancing and the hand washing and how the cafeteria services and transportation services are going to work. There's still a lot of heavy lifting to do for our school districts. And, you know, one of the things that I want to mention is that, you know, there's still ongoing discussion about athletics and what we should do about that, both at the, you know, secondary school level and at the college level. And, you know, I think we really have to focus on the primary mission, and that's education. And once we sort that out, once we get into a better situation to get kids in classrooms, then we need to have the discussion about, about the other elements of the activities, the extracurricular activities. But we've got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, what concerns me a lot is, you know, one of these young kids could get infected. And, you know, a lot of my people in District 3, and I'm pretty sure it's in District 1 and 2 also, and then 4, where there's big families there with the economy the way it is. They're moving in into one house and you probably got multi-families living there. And that's what really frightens me is, is you're going to send a kid to school, then we should also really focus on the families who are sending their kids there and educate them to immediately, you know, take care of if one of them get infected. Because I know incidents where one person gets infected and they go, the other ones get tested as negative and then five or six days down the road, they get infected. You know, so it's just because you get a test and it comes negative the first time doesn't mean you can't get it later on, especially in a housing condition where everybody's breathing the same air and the heat, the way it is here in Texas. Everybody's staying inside a condition. So I'm very concerned about that.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, anything else while we have these folks with us? Councilmember Kitchen.
This can be answered later. I would just like at some point to understand what the decision-making is around adding an additional prologue. Last I heard, that we had a waiting list for our prologues for homeless individuals. And so I'd like to understand if it's being, I thought it'd been considered to open a prologue. I'd like to understand what are the criteria to determine if that's a yes or no? And who's making that decision when? So, again, it's not something you have to speak to today unless you know that. But I would like to understand that the prologues have been pretty successful in terms of addressing our homeless, the risk for our homeless individuals. It's also, it's also intended to be a path to housing, as you mentioned earlier. And so while 300 is certainly something to be, you know, to feel, to feel good about, 300 people in our prologues, you know, there's additional need. So I'm wanting to understand where that stands.
Maybe it'd be helpful, manager, if you could get an update on the real estate issues? Because I know that there's some activity happening there in part in response to Councilmember Kitchen's question.
Will do. And we plan to bring this up at the August 4th work session. And so we'll have a full briefing on this at that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. On that same point, if you can also update us on the hotel that we purchased and when that will be online? Because it should be about online from the prior predictions. And that may provide some additional way to transition folks into housing.
Will do. Okay. Anything else? All right. All right, uh, Councilmember Sar?
Just before we close out, I wanna add my voice to the chorus that I really like us to see, see us make another purchase soon. And, uh, because I think we're, in my view, behind timeline on that, as well as the Worker Resource Center question that I had asked earlier. So I'd really like to see those, those up and running as soon as.
And I think that's true. You've heard of me before. I think the community needs to see us proactively taking steps to, to provide. Permanent supportive housing opportunities and to try to leverage the opportunities we have now to, to be able to live in that. And then I just want to conclude as you guys go off. I think that, uh, you and your staffs have done a really good job, especially, uh, Dr. Esq. And Director Hayden. Uh, for us to have had the community response that we've had, happens in no small part because of the messaging. That's coming out of the offices and the work that your staffs are, are doing. We've driven down the numbers and that gives our city a really unique opportunity. Uh, to be able to get to a place where maybe we're going to be in a stronger and better position to be able to sustain the opening of schools. Or in a better, stronger position to be able to sustain businesses being open if we're. Incredibly protective of this opportunity we have given ourselves. Uh, which means that even while the numbers look good, as you said, Dr. Esq., people have to double down on their wearing face coverings and social distancing now that we see that that works. And people have to be prepared to do this indefinitely until there's a vaccine. But with that inconvenience, they really come opportunities that we can, uh, show how it works. And there have not been many cities that have been able to maintain that vigilance and diligence, uh, when things get good. Uh, and we need to make sure that our community does that. Okay, with that, we'll let you go. Um, thank you very much for the work that you did.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Asat going, I just wanted to acknowledge something Director Hayden said earlier about 17 individuals leaving the prologues into permanent housing. You know, we all had questions and comments and nobody, um, hit on that, and I just want to recognize the significance of that. That's really tremendous. And so thank you to Bella Carmen and Director Hayden and all of many others in public health who are making sure that, you know, for our. And our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness, that pandemic becomes a way of, of really, um, getting them into safe and stable housing. So thank you for, thank you for highlighting that, that, um, information this morning, Director Hayden.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna release, uh, Dr. Esq. And then Director Hayden is gonna introduce the presentation from the UT partners that we have in the nursing home study. Director Hayden?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, um, very much for the presentation. Um, at this time, on the, on May 7th, um, council, um, passed a resolution. That directed the city manager to plan and collaborate with the Design Institute for Health. Um, at Dale Medical School to analyze, evaluate and identify approaches. For systems improvements to protect residents and reduce the risk of spread of COVID-19 in nursing homes. Assisted living centers and other long-term care facilities. Today I have Stacy Chang is, who is going to provide a presentation. And this is, um, one of the first, um, presentations that they are going to provide, and so I will turn over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hayden. Uh, hopefully you all can hear me.
Yes.
If, uh, if AV could bring up the slides, um, uh, we'll, uh, I'll begin the briefing then. While we're waiting for that, by way of introduction, my name is Stacy Chang. I am the Executive Director for the Design Institute for Health. Um, and as, uh, Director Hayden mentioned, um, uh, this briefing is, uh, a report, if you go to the next slide. Um, is a report back on the first phase of study that we've conducted over the course of the last two months. Um, a particular note of gratitude to Director Hayden, Dr. Esq. And to Anjan Hanafi from Austin Public Health for helping to facilitate the study. Um, their hard-won perspective from the front lines of this crisis has been particularly helpful. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna give you a, a brief rundown on, um, the work that we've done to date, a little bit of grounding around nursing homes. But I want to spend the bulk of the time discussing, um, four, uh, insights that have emerged from this first, uh, phase of work. Uh, and leave room for a bit of discussion and questions from the council itself. And if you go to the next slide, uh, we are just concluding this first phase of study, which we term the focused investigation. Uh, because in it, uh, we study known areas of concern. So, uh, we looked at facility issues such as physical space and layout, proximity of staff and residents. Uh, and density and flow through the facilities as well as shared utilization of space. Uh, we also looked at operational frameworks and processes, including care protocols, uh, group activities, caregiver handoffs and scheduling and timing of care. And then finally, uh, focused a fair amount of, uh, effort, uh, understanding, uh, the challenges around staffing. Which had us consider both personnel roles and responsibilities, as well as staff concerns and priorities. Um, the subsequent phase of research, um, which, uh, begins this week, uh, which we've termed the broadened investigation, will be informed. By the discoveries from this first phase, uh, which I will share shortly. Um, and then phases three, four, and five are meant to develop responses to the challenges identified in phases one and two. Uh, to gather evidence for efficacy and then to make recommendations for changes, uh, based on that evidence. I will note, um, at this moment, we have, we are not proposing solutions just yet, although we have plenty of ideas. Um, as we require some additional depth and breadth from the research effort before we draw specific conclusions about, about the definitive issues we want to address. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the institute, um, has specific expertise in the process of identifying and solving complex systemic problems. Um, but we are not experts in nursing homes per se. And so we, uh, recruited a notable cast to serve as the steering committee on this project, including Anjan Hanafi from, from APH. Um, as well as Michelle Dion Vahalik and Michael Gale from the state's Health and Human Services Commission. Uh, I want to make particular note of that, um, as part of the, as the state agency with statutory oversight over the nursing homes. Uh, they've been quite invaluable in providing perspective on regulation, quality improvement, uh, policy and enforcement. Uh, their participation in particular has been, uh, uniquely helpful in understanding the balance of influences on nursing homes. Um, the remainder of the steering committee is rounded out by leadership from the, from three schools at UT, uh, School of Nursing, uh, Social Work, and, uh, of course, the medical school as well. Next slide, please. Um, yeah, in this first phase of work, uh, we began, uh, with secondary research to form a baseline understanding of, uh, the nursing home landscape and, um, and the, uh, current COVID-19 response. Uh, both at local, regional and national levels. Uh, and then we conducted nearly 50 interviews and observations in facilities, uh, with every manner of staff, uh, listed here. Um, along with subject matter experts, um, either on the steering committee or recommended by the steering committee members. Uh, much of the interview and observation work was done onsite in nursing home facilities. We had planned to, um, uh, visit five sites, uh, uh, spread around Austin. Um, we completed four of them. The fifth had a COVID outbreak just as we were about to, um, uh, to visit, uh, and with respect to. Um, managing infection both for staff and residents and for the team, we deferred that until later this week. We go to the next slide, please. These are the five facilities represented in the phase of work. You'll see on the left, uh, map of the five facilities and, and then some details in the images on the right. Um, there's a geographical diversity here that is not yet complete. Um, we recognize that, um, there's a gap on the east and south side, uh, which we will remedy in the coming, uh, phase of work. Uh, we will, um, some of the facilities included memory care units, uh, caring for patients with dementia. Um, uh, and one included independent living facilities as well. Um, we will focus more intentionally on assisted living and independent living in the second phase of work. For this first phase of work, uh, the focus really was on skilled nursing facilities, uh, also known as nursing homes. If you go to the next slide. Just as a brief glimpse into our process, we, uh, don't just conduct interviews. Uh, we actually observe facilities and personnel in operation firsthand. Uh, interviews are usually only the beginning of the story. They are the truth that people, uh, can or choose to relate. We like to see what lies behind, uh, beneath that veneer. Um, I won't narrate each of these photos to you. They are in the comprehensive report that we filed with the city and I think was provided to the council members, um, as a pre-read. Uh, you're welcome to dig into more of that detail. Um, I will say that we had the opportunity to see every manner of operation in a COVID-19 context, from laundry and food service to social distancing and isolation protocols. And if you go to the next slide, um, um, uh, we saw quite a bit of, uh, how space inside nursing homes was being converted. And workflow was being adjusted to abide by infection, uh, protocols. So, um, that's the, the brief introduction. Uh, I want to establish a little bit of context. If you go to the next slide. I think unless you've spent substantial time, oh, sorry, the slide previous, uh, um, thank you. Uh, unless you've spent substantial time inside a nursing home over the last decade, you might not recognize how much it has changed. Um, and the insights that have emerged from this first phase of work, I think, require a bit of familiarity with some of the challenges that the facilities, the staff. And the industry faces a whole. Uh, I won't presume you, I won't presume you are all experts in nursing home, home care. So I'll share with you a few facts to ground you in the reality of the industry before we, uh, dig into the insights. Next slide, please. Um, so the, the type of facility depends, um, uh, quite significantly on patient acuity. Essentially how much medical care and living assistance individual needs. Our focus in the first phase of work is at, at the high need, high level of care side of the spectrum on the skilled nursing facilities. Again, what we, uh, uh, usually call nursing homes. Um, we will expand, uh, our investigation include independent living, assisted living, and maybe even some in-home care. Um, uh, we, uh, uh, those assist independent living are sometimes part of what we call a community, a continuing care retirement community. Uh, which usually involves all three levels of care. Uh, and we did, uh, have an opportunity to see one of those in this first phase of study. Next slide, please. So, um, an important point to emphasize here is that the level of patient care in nursing homes today is similar to what you would have found in a hospital just, uh, a decade or two ago. Wound care, intravenous therapy, orthopedic care, breathing treatments are all standard protocols in nursing homes right now. They are very much medical facilities and not retirement homes, as you might have remembered from, um, from a couple decades ago. Next slide, please. Um, the most common reason for residents in the nursing home is the inability for someone to perform activities of daily living. Bathing, uh, uh, changing clothes, feeding themselves. Uh, more than 80% of residents need help with three or more, uh, activities of daily living. Uh, more than 90% in nursing homes who can walk need assistance. Uh, more than 75% of residents have trouble making daily decisions. Um, at least a third have problematic behaviors, um, half struggle to understand, uh, others or have trouble communicating to others, uh, issues with comprehension. So the point here is the acuity of need, um, for residents is actually quite high. Um, and that point i- is important. If you go to the next slide. 80 to 85% of nursing homes in Texas, uh, the residents depend on Medicare or Medicaid funding for their care. And this is important because the funding for Medicare is time limited to 100 days, uh, uh, for recovery after an incident that requires hospitalization. So 100 days after you've been in the hospital, the funding for your care runs out. Uh, and because, um, Medicaid's limited daily reimbursement rate can't fund much more than essential services, these are pretty, um, narrow margin businesses. If you go to the next slide, um, to wit, uh, 86% of, uh, Texas nursing homes report. Costs that actually exceed the reimbursement they get from Medicaid. Uh, and this has been the case, um, for decades. Um, uh, which means that, uh, most of the homes, uh, who are majority Medicaid. Uh, depend on Medicare and private pay patients to make up the difference. This is a very low margin business. They are always running right on the cut line between in the red and in the black. Next slide, please. Even though in any given moment, there's only about 3, 3, 3,000 folks, uh, in Travis County in nursing homes, um, over the course of a lifetime, 70% of people, uh, uh, over 65. Can expect to use some form of long-term care. And as the demographics in Texas shift, um, this is a challenge that will only grow. So this is not an issue that will be diminishing over time. Next slide, please. Uh, 55% of residents have been medically diagnosed with dementia. Um, and that helps you understand that most of these patients have some level of cognitive impairment, which makes navigating this COVID-19 moment even more difficult. Uh, a lot of the changes that are being pressed down into the nursing homes, um, that they're experiencing actually don't make sense to them. Uh, uh, and the residents struggle with that. Next slide, please. Um, I think, uh, you may recognize that nursing homes are highly regulated. Um, in addition to the federal statutes, um, the operators have to follow. Uh, thousands of other codes at the federal, state and local level. Uh, and failures to do so means they may lose their accreditation, uh, uh, and their eligibility for Medicare and Medicaid payments. Um, minor infractions, uh, may have, uh, small penalties, large problems can actually have a pretty catastrophic effect on their ability to stay in business. Next slide, please. Staff workload is, uh, disproportionate to hourly wage. Uh, on average in Texas, a certified nursing aide who's the individual who provides most of the hands-on care for patients. Uh, makes less than minimum wage here in Austin. So they make on average, um, between 12 and $13, even though minimum wage here in Austin is 15. Um, you can essentially make more, and this was a quote we heard from staff. You can essentially make more at Buc-E's over the weekend than you can as a certified nurse aide, um, uh, working an entire week. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, that means, uh, competition for staff is pretty fierce. Uh, skilled nursing facilities are the second largest healthcare employer in the nation. And in a, a healthcare industry where supply of skilled labor is insufficient, uh, to meet demand, the competition for that staff is actually quite stiff. And what that means, uh, on the next slide, is that, um, staff retention is a constant challenge for the facilities and their administrators. Um, I'll, I'll call your attention to, uh, the second to last line for certified nursing aides, who are the folks who, who, who provide most of the bedside care. On average, in a facility, 85% of that staff turns over in the course of a year. That high turnover is a constant reality and a strain on, um, not just continuity of care. Um, and familiarity with protocol within a facility. It's also a, a particular strain on very thin operating margins as well. So, um, thanks for, um, accommodating, uh, that, that run through, um, uh, some facts. I think it's useful then to give context then in the next slide. Um, one about the, the state of nursing homes, but then this is, uh, specific to Austin's, um, uh, it is specific to Austin. Um, there are 31 nursing facilities in Travis County. At any given time, 4,000 to 5,000 staff working in those facilities. Uh, and, uh, in, in the usual time, about 3,000 residents, um, which represents about 75% occupancy of those homes. Um, there are nursing homes in, uh, nearly every district represented by this council. And so the, the, um, the need and the challenge, um, is diffuse. So, um, I'll move then into insights if you can go to the next slide. Um, I shared all that previous context because these next four insights actually derive from that context. Um, again, this is just the output from the first phase of work, but it's clear that each of these insights, uh, represents a significant challenge in need of a solution. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, before I share the insights, I, I need to pause, uh, pause and acknowledge that, um, as complex a system as this is. It really is a complex system of people. Um, it includes people who need and provide care. Uh, and in between these sets of people are some very human stories, um, of strong relationships between staff, uh, between residents, between residents and staff. Uh, there wasn't a facility we visited where there weren't a half dozen hero stories. Um, of staff making really incredible sacrifices, uh, in their own personal lives to ensure the safety of residences. There was one director of nursing who had separated from, she was a single mother and had separated from her son of three years, uh, her three-year-old son, uh, for three months. In order to protect, um, uh, the, uh, safety of the residents. Really, and that's just one of, you know, dozens of stories that, uh, we came to know, uh, in the research. Uh, I think it's sometimes easy to forget that the system of care really is a giant set of intertwined, um, human relationships, and it's important not to lose sight of that. So, um, let me step into the insights then, uh, next slide. The first insight, um, is something we've named theory, uh, versus reality in nursing homes. And it reflects this notion that as important as infection control protocols are in theory. Um, how they're operationalized on the ground is, is affected by clinical, uh, operational and human realities on the ground. Um, that operationalization can be very challenging, in some cases almost impossible when the theory and reality conflict. So let me give you a couple examples if you go to the next slide. There are a lot of, uh, there's a lot of guidance around creating isolation units, uh, patients who are, um, at risk or have contracted COVID-19 have to be separated from, uh, the rest of the nursing home population. Putting those infection control units and isolation units in place, in some cases, uh, violates life safety code. You know, creating separation means that egress, um, is then limited. Uh, it displaces residents out of, uh, a room that they've lived in, in some cases for years, to another part of the facility. Which for someone with dementia is very upsetting. Uh, and, and, uh, it separates staff, uh, from residents that they're familiar with. Trying to keep staff isolated to certain units so that there's no cross-contamination means that some of the relationships between staff and residents are broken. Social distancing, um, is, uh, something that the nursing homes have been asked to practice. Uh, in terms of patient care, I didn't meet a single, uh, certified nurse assistant aide who said, "I can practice, uh, what I need to do, uh, uh, at a safe distance of six feet." If I'm going to dress, bathe. If I'm going to dress, bathe, feed a patient, I'm going to be in contact with them." Residents often are moved to nursing homes to have opportunities for increased socialization. That is now essentially forbidden when we're trying to practice social distancing. And actually, a number of residents are losing appetite. And there are a lot of reports of folks not eating because of anxiety or depression. The quarantine has eliminated family visitation and also field trips out of the nursing home. I'll talk a little bit about the effects of that in a second. The use of PPE is actually, produces a lot of anxiety for patients, especially with dementia, who don't understand why their caregivers are now dressed like astronauts. Wearing masks is sometimes an impossibility, made even more difficult by those who are hearing impaired. You watch interactions and eventually a mask will drop so that someone can actually communicate with somebody else. Many of the care providers are now being, deployments are being had via telehealth, which adds an additional burden on top of care providers' workloads. And then the financial impact is not, is not to be lost here. Turning double occupancy rooms into single occupancy rooms in order to create these isolation zones, the reduction in elective surgeries, which these nursing homes depend on for business in recovery, and then their trepidation around new admissions, especially patients who are high risk or might wander and therefore increase infection risk, are all issues that these nursing homes are dealing with. And so infection control theory is really important, and good theory is important. But the operationalization of that inside the reality of a nursing home can be sometimes extremely difficult, sometimes impossible. If we'll move to the next slide, insight two. This is not meant as a condemnation of any agency or any team. We are in an unprecedented moment where guidance is hard to come by and evolving constantly. But the nursing homes are constantly receiving guidance from any number of agencies. Recommendations are communicated much more than weekly, almost on a daily basis, and they come from a lot of different sources. You will hear administrators say, "I have to, I'm absorbing guidance from Austin Public Health, from HHSC, from the CDC, from the World Health Organization, from OSHA, and from my own corporate." Trying to make sense of the ninety emails I get in a week is extremely daunting and more than I had planned to do. If you move to the next slide. Every time a facility receives infection control guidance, they're asking a number of questions. Does it apply to me? Does it evolve previous guidance? How does it affect my facility? How will I disseminate it to the staff and ask them to accommodate it? What happens if we have questions or clarifications? Who I go to? In cases, they abide by the guidance from agencies who can penalize them. And that's often the regulators, like the surveyors from HHSC. The impact on facility operators is significant. And we saw a big distinction between those with strong corporate governance, who could interpret it and then press the interpreted guidance down to the facilities themselves. We corporate operators left the facilities to themselves. And then independently operated facilities really prioritize the things that protected the safety of staff and resident and a little bit overwhelmed by knowing which one to abide by. There, the lack of support for staff bullet here really says that a lot of this guidance doesn't yet recognize the kind of impact it has on staff. And so it's not designed yet for consumption and utilization just yet. Next slide, please. Insight three is really around staff. The novelty of this virus really has a particularly, the novel challenges around this virus have had a huge effect on staff. And not just in the work environment, but in their personal lives as well. If we go to the next slide. The staff themselves have a lot of fear. One, they're working in an environment where they're at a heightened risk for infection. And they also don't want to be the person that brings that infection into into the facility. They don't want to be that person who all their colleagues will know brought the infection into the facility and incurred a bunch of additional work and and protocol. They're, they are wearing masks, they're being screened on arrival. There's a lot of different protocol, which is making their work much more difficult. And in many cases, in most cases, the staff feel like it's unsustainable. They keep wondering when they'll return to normal, and the administrators keep telling them, "This is your new normal." And most of them don't think they can sustain themselves in this new normal. There's a particular note here around staff risk. When the edict came down that staff should confine themselves to working in one facility, and many of these staff work across facilities, they had to choose and tie their fortunes, their economic fortunes, to a single facility. And they're nervous about that. If the facility goes down or has a COVID outbreak, there's real concern from an economic standpoint that they won't be able to provide for themselves or for their families. And that's something that came through in a lot of the research. And I'll end with this one, which is insight four. The the medical needs of patients in this moment haven't really changed that much. But because of the quarantining, the lack of visitation, and the lack of opportunity to get out of the nursing home, the cycle of social consequences have been really high. So family, the individual residents are suffering from anxiety, depression, loneliness. And the only remedy to that really are the staff in the facility. And so they're doing yeoman's work, trying to accommodate, trying to comfort and ease the difficulties of those residents. That has a cascade effect of actually making the staff's lives much more difficult as well. And they're carrying emotional burden and mental burden as a result of of the pandemic as well. If you go to the next slide. You're seeing family who's been isolated from their loved ones making increasingly difficult requests of staff because the staff are the only ones who have contact with the residents. The staff themselves are finding it hard to process all of the emotion and the additional workload that's being asked of them. Staff retention is then an issue, as it has always been in this moment, even more so. And the impact of staff burnout is starting to be seen. People who are having their own mental breakdowns and asking for time away, which is just then exacerbating the staff retention issue. So I'll conclude with this next slide, which is what we call emerging insights. The four I just shared are not an exhaustive list. There are several other emerging insights. I won't read them to you here. But that merit further exploration, and we will be pursuing that in the next phase of work. I'll pause here before I talk about next steps, just to see if there are any questions from the council members.
Counsel, I can't see everyone because of the screen view. Does anyone have any questions at this point for your next steps? Why don't you go ahead and proceed? Councilmember Kitchen, did you have something?
Yeah, I would just say that that I appreciate the insights related to workers. I'm especially concerned that we're talking about, you know, low-wage, low-wage workers. I mean, the low minimum wage for us, many of whom, and I don't know if you have any statistics on this, but my understanding, if it's correct, many of them are from minority communities, communities of color, and who just don't have much options from an economic standpoint. So I am hoping that as you proceed through this study, that at the end of the day, there'll be some, some things that we as a city can do to help these workers. And I'm pleased that you have engaged the state because the state does regulate. But I haven't seen the state step up to the plate at all in terms of helping out these workers. So I'm, as we've done with many other workers in our community, I'm hoping that we can find a path to to be of assistance. I think you said four to five thousand workers in these facilities in our community at less than minimum wage under very unstable economic situations. So I'd invite you in the future to provide us more information about the demographics to the extent that you. And I'm looking forward to, you know, as you conclude the research, helping us thinking about what we can do to assist these workers. So thank you. This is very helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Kitchen, for the suggestions and guidance. We will certainly focus on that in the next phase.
Councilmember Turo.
Thank you too for really providing some depth to the way in which individuals living in in these group facilities have been impacted by the lack of contact with their family members. We've been reading about it in such a global, from such a global perspective, that you really helped, helped me better understand how, what the, what the daily impact might be on someone who's living within, within a facility of that sort and maybe suffering from medical dementia and now is experiencing the world in a, in a very, very different way and experiencing the people with whom they're most familiar in terms of caregiving in a very different way as well. I know that there have been discussions about ways, ways to link youth with individuals in nursing homes and some other creative programs. I wonder if you could let us know what the, what the state of sharing that kind of, those kinds of best practices? It seems like we have roles to play within our parks programming. And perhaps we are, and that's what I'm remembering in the back of my head, that the, I think our parks program is piloting a program of contact among youth. And I wonder if you could share that and, and again, just kind of bring it around to what, what is the, what are the networking opportunities for sharing these good ideas and opportunities among, among our home facilities in the area?
Yeah, thank you for the comments. There are certainly bright spots, and in a briefing as, as quick as this, not an opportunity to do all of them justice. There are certainly improvisations in nursing homes that are solving for some of the challenges. They're not complete. Developing networks, we saw some ad hoc networks developed between nursing homes that actually share best practices. That's something we can actually help to develop as part of the city as well. Austin Public Health already plays a role in that, in the weekly calls that they have. We can build on that as well. I think the primary concern is about managing infection in and out of the facilities. And, and to the extent that we can engage other members of the community who want to have an effect, I think we should, and you know, the parks are a fine example of that, right? Engaging in an outdoor space where risk is low is an opportunity to mitigate some of the challenges that the isolation has caused for these residents. And so as we move to the solutioning side of this study, we'll begin to start aggregating those, building on them, and hopefully formalizing them ways that, that everyone can utilize the information.
Great, and I was really speaking specifically about some of the virtual programs that I see. Individual calls or, you know, writing, if that's not, not posing challenges with, you know, things of that sort. So thank you for letting us know that there are some networks of that shared information. But to the extent that our, our own city programs are already refashioning what they're doing with youth and with others, it seems like an opportunity to really maybe bring them to contact with, virtual contact with, with some of these facilities.
Absolutely.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and move to next steps?
Okay, we'll bring the slides up. Just to close then, in terms of next steps, the next phase of work, when AV brings these up, I'll just, I'll read these as, as AV brings them up, is to studies additional nursing homes in other areas of Austin where perspective would be informative. I think, as I noted earlier, we don't have a perfect geographical representation, which we'd like. We'll expand the study to assisted living facilities and other models, including aging in place. We will focus quite a bit more on interviews with residents and family. And then additionally, to staff that have departed the field because of the consequences of the existing crisis. Look at roles and utilization of technology. And then evaluate policies in place that may impact nursing home and staffing and see if there are opportunities to amend those, as well as reviewing some of the cost and value that, that the city has provided in terms of temporary staffing agencies and seeing if, if there's better ways to utilize that funding. And then ultimately, develop some frameworks to understand where the landscape of challenges actually are and then which ones are the most productive ones to respond to. That concludes these remarks, and so I'll thank the council for, for your time and attention.
Great, Councilmember Kitchen?
One last thing, I'm glad to see that you'll also be looking into other moments, specifically aging in place. We have many seniors or actually elderly people across our community whose families are taking, trying very hard to take care of them at home. And so understanding the challenges there would be helpful. That also happens because of the inability of families to be able to afford placing their family member in assisted living or a nursing home. So aging and aging aspect of this, be interesting to understand that as an approach for reducing risk, but also understanding the kinds of burdens it places on families and whether families actually even have that choice. And if it's really becomes an economic choice, so thank you.
Thank you for that reinforcement, Councilmember.
Great, thank you. I ask Councilmember Thiria.
Yes, and I really want to thank you for that report and, and the way you mentioned how these workers are really, really are heroes that are taking care of our seniors. You know, I have my, my son, my good friend and the mother of my daughter-in-law just turned seventy, we're both, both the same age. And I tried to find out why she didn't want to retire. And she said, "They're all my friends," you know, "and I need to keep going and work to take care of them." So I really want to thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Colleagues, thank you. Colleagues, it is ten-thirty. We have a half an hour before we break, recess to go into executive session. So let's do.